Good evening, Holliston, and welcome to the Select Board's meeting for Monday, February 1st, 2021. This evening's meeting, because of weather concerns, is being held remotely. Subsequently, pursuant to the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Paragraph 20, as well as the Select Board's emergency order dated 3/16/2020, the Select Board will be using remote participation for this meeting. The audio of this meeting is being recorded and will be posted to the town's webpage within 24 hours in accordance with the Governor's emergency action requirement of keeping the public informed of actions during this meeting. At this time, a roll call of attendance will be taken. Mr. Sparrow?
President.
Hi, Ben, how are you?
Hello, good evening.
Ms. Hein?
President.
Excellent. So I think Mr. Cronin is here as well, as you can see, I think we are underway. The posted agenda will undergo a little bit of modification this evening at the Chair's liking here. We have a few things to try and get out of the way in the interest of time. So the first thing I'd like to do is to bring forth our budget reviews for the Planning Board and the Building Inspector. I'd ask if Ms. Karen Sherman and/or Mark are available at this time. Mark, Karen, are you with us?
Hi, this is Karen.
Hey, Karen, how are you?
Good.
Mark with us, Travis?
Yes, he's here as well. We'll go with Karen first.
Sorry, I'm here. I was muted, sorry.
Not a problem. Hi, Mark, how you doing tonight?
Good, how you doing?
We're well, thanks. So Travis, I'll give you the floor and you can direct the conversation, or Karen, or Mark. We're all yours.
We'll start on the ZBA. Karen puts together the ZBA and Planning Board budget. The ZBA is the one that's being reviewed. Planning Board goes directly to Finance Committee, which both will be on tomorrow night's Finance Committee agenda. So Karen here, which I put up on the screen, is the Zoning Board of Appeals, FY22 request. Go ahead, Karen.
It's pretty vanilla, level funding, as you see. Our, well, revenues are where? The board's been fairly busy. They had a 40B that they just wrapped up some extra hearings on. Our biggest line item would be clerical. And the model that we've been using for the past, I think, four years has been that Planning Board staff is staffing ZBA. So I have been attending meetings and our clerk has been setting up the meetings, doing all the legal notices. And so my time is as needed and Diane's is far more regular. The board's generally been meeting once a month. But there is quite a bit of setup and then turning decisions around for them. They've traditionally had money for professional services to get legal consults. You all have made that very easy for them to do these days. They have taken on some bylaw projects in the past and I'm going to encourage them to do that in the future. And I'm sure Mark will tell you there are some pet projects that he would like to prioritize in terms of zoning bylaw revisions. Communications is pretty standard. We are doing everything electronic with this board during COVID, which is good. They've been totally remote. Office supplies and professional development. So professional development is their professional development. They are part of the group of planning and zoning officials that have trainings available to them. Those trainings have generally been sort of like a half a day training. And then things throughout the year as they select. And this year, that's all gone virtual, which is very good. And I think we've had some members take advantage of several of those training sessions. And that's essentially the end. To a point.
Let us turn to our first board member with any questions, Ben.
Seems pretty straightforward. I know you are very busy and so good that we can get all this accomplished. So I appreciate that. You answered my question in your brief presentation, so I am good, thank you.
Thanks, Ben. Tina?
Yeah, just a quick question, Karen. So it doesn't look like it, I'll just ask. No changes in level of service, type of service with pandemic. You mentioned online meetings, that doesn't change any budget item. It doesn't even look like any budget items have changed, period. So pandemic has not had any impact on this budget for FY22?
No, the board has been very willing to meet. And again, you know, they managed a 40B application during COVID and I think they did a bunch of extra meetings and initially they had quite a turnout for some hearings and there were some, I'm not sure how many hearing sessions total. I'm sure Chris Mayo could tell you how many hearing sessions they had on that particular subject, but yeah, they've been very willing to meet.
Very well attended?
Very well attended. And I think that, you know, as the options go forward, I think they would like to stick with sort of a hybrid
Yeah.
meeting kind of format.
And that professional development for FY21 and then again for FY22, certainly for 21, was there any professional development? I mean, everything would go to a webinar online, so I'm just looking at it.
Some of them are free, some of them are, some of them cost. I think that, I'm not sure why. I honestly don't know why that's zero, but it's certainly there to support their.
Okay.
My guess is that several of them attended sessions and never asked for reimbursement, but.
I'll take a look. Are you good, Tina?
All set, thanks.
All right, I have no questions. This budget came in actually below guidelines, so thank you very much. At this time, I'll introduce a motion to approve the Zoning Board of Appeals FY22 budget that totals $10,925.
This is Ben Sparrow, I'll make that motion.
Yep, Tina Hein, I will second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Tina Hein, aye.
Ben Sparrow, aye.
And John Cronin, aye. Thank you, Karen. Shall we move on to the Planning Board, Karen?
So the Planning Board again is not reviewed here. I gave it to you just for context as well, but Karen came to present the ZBA tonight, so we'll go next to Mark on building inspection. And so just to introduce anybody who didn't meet Mark when he came to say hello to the board, he's been on, been with us now for a few.
Hello.
And so this budget, I worked with Mark on and also got some feedback from Chris Canny, who's still available to us as Mark needs him. But for the most part, Mark is looking at his needs for FY22. And I think if you want to go through sort of the GIS conversation that we had on where we are with that budget, Mark, or any of the other highlights you're looking to hit on?
Yeah, no, the GIS is going to be $10,500 because the $10,000 to maintain the system and was the 500, Travis, was for the UniBank, right? To continue that?
Yeah, so the original purchase was in FY20 for $25,000. The uplink to UniBank was the $2,500 that was in FY21 and now it's in the computer license agreement. And yeah, so it'll continue the UniBank agreement and the license agreement and any maintenance we need.
And I mean, basically, I think the budget is pretty similar to last year. There's a uptick in communications due to my cellphone, which went up a little bit. I mean, other than that, I had talked to Travis about the professional development because there might be a code change at some point this year, but may not. So we may not, we'll find that money somewhere else if we need to. But other than that, there's not many changes.
Yep, I would just point out one thing. So this obviously is, we have the salary of the Building Inspector himself and also one full-time admin person, the inspectors when it comes to electrical plumbing. And you, there is, sorry, one other one, Mark. They're through a revolving fund and that is the revenue that you see down on the bottom here, revenue and expenses and a balance. So, you know, Mark is able to have a pretty stable budget, whether things that are a little bit unforeseen because of, you know, the way that the revolving fund supports his operations. But this is the tax-supported budget that we're looking at here with just a less than half a percent increase.
All right, turn to, are you all set, Mark? Any other budget?
No, I'm all set. Do you got any questions?
I think we have a couple. Let's start with Mr. Sparrow. Ben, any questions?
Yeah, a couple quick questions. Is GIS exclusively in this with the Building Inspector? I can't remember where else it might hit. And I guess this is more a question for Travis than for Mark.
Yeah, so one of the things, Chris Canny obviously rolled this up in '20 and now Mark is getting into it as well. You know, it does cross departments to a certain extent and the fact that, you know, information is put in from the assessors, it's used by planning, there's a, you know, there can be a DPW component in the future. At the same point, the Building Inspector's Department was the one who drove that purchase. And so right now, the main cost of it is here. I think we can look at that in the future, but I mean, this is essentially year, the second full year of it in operation.
You have something to add to that too, Travis. So it does, it does go to other departments for certain review. So I have the ability to have the fire chief review something, conservation review something, they can comment through this system. So it does, it does work with other systems.
Okay. Okay. And my other question is, so you brought up, now forgive me because I'm not as well-schooled in some of this vernacular, but a code change from the state that might be $2,500, is that something that is a possibility, like it could come up? Or is it something that is going to come up at some point that we might need to be aware of in the?
Well, they were supposed to be, we were supposed to adopt the 2021 International Code, but due to COVID, it's been behind because Massachusetts puts all sorts of amendments on it. So I think we'll be all set though because we have $1,800 in there and then we could use the revolving account to pick up the difference if there was. Because account is, can be used for the inspectors and supply the inspectors. So I don't think, it won't be, won't be an issue, right, Travis?
No, we're pretty, you know, if we need those materials, we can definitely get them. The revolving fund can support it. And then if the books aren't available or anything like that, you know, we're not building in something that then goes away at the end of the year. So I think this is probably the right way to go about it.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks very much, Mark, appreciate it. I'm all set.
Thanks, Ben. Hi, Tina, do you have any questions?
Just looking at that capital outlay, the purchase of equipment and wondering what the, I remember the $25,000, I believe that was software purchase to update some of the some of the permit process. I'm just wondering what the $2,500 is. It's gone now, which is fine, but just a matter of curiosity, trying to remember what that $2,500 purchase was.
That's what, when Mark referred to UniBank, so the $25,000 was for the, for it, $2,500 was to link us up with UniBank so they can now take online payments.
Right.
So the Building Department, the most of, you know, what goes through the Treasure Collector's Office, a lot of what goes on upstairs can now be done online. So the Building Department has now sort of come into, come into that to allow people to process payments online. The $2,500 linked us up with UniBank.
Okay. I'm assuming that those two, the 2020 purchase and the 2021 purchase have actually been a really good thing during the pandemic to allow for more streamlined process for people to interact with the Building Department, not having to come in in person. I'm assuming that's true. Have there been any significant changes in service because of the pandemic and anything that you see?
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. It's actually been great, like with today with the snow, I actually spent all day on the database, replying to contractors, issuing permits, reviewing stuff and getting additional information back to them. And then I know, as you guys all know, I've been locked up several times. I've been, due to the COVID and my family and I was able to review permits and it's really, it's great. It's, it's been great. And we've limited, I mean, people don't even, maybe two people a day will call to want to come down and do paper, do a paper application, which we still have to allow because we don't have a kiosk outside the Building Department. But even a few of them people, I'm getting, well, it's really easy, you can do this. We help them, we get them into the database and then once they're in the database, they have a PIN, a four-digit PIN, and it remembers all their information. So all they do is a four-digit PIN and it's great for contractors that are constantly pulling permits, especially the solar, the roofs. Yeah, it's great. It was, it was well, the money well spent.
Yeah, okay. So you're like our kids, right? No more snow days?
Yeah, exactly.
I have no more questions, thank you, Mark.
Yep, no problem.
Thanks, Tina. Mark, good evening. I just have one question, either for you or Travis, but I observed that the administrative salaries are growing by 2.33% for fiscal year '22 and I'm just wondering what that is for, who that is for?
That was the outgoing Building Inspector versus the incoming Building Inspector is just a change. So last year.
Mark? Go ahead.
Last year was based on Chris Canny, this year is based on Mark?
So the, the extra $1,959 is for Mark's pay, maintaining Mark's pay in FY22 at this point?
Yes.
There's no, there's no growth, okay. And I, the only other question I had was, I observed that the building permits appear to have peaked in fiscal year '19. Do we expect to see some kind of a surge for FY22 or any kind of, like what was the, why did it peak at FY19 rather, at 400 and some, I don't know, at 438 and go down? Is there a reason for that?
No, I mean, other than a little bit of a building boom in the town, I would, I would imagine. I wasn't here in '19, so I don't know.
Yeah, I have to look into it. I mean, I think anecdotally, it's been pretty busy, would you would say that, right? You know, we've seen quite a bit of work being processed in town. So I think this, the mid-year number for '21 at 280 through December is, is a pretty high number from where we assume. So this year is going, you know, above trend for the first half. And so.
So that, I was going to ask you that question. That 280 was not the appropriated or expected revenue, that's revenue to date?
Yeah, I think it's just in the wrong column here, it should be right here. But yeah, so, and I think we, and when I get into revenue in a second, you know, I can sort of update that as well. But, you know, where, I think when I did the '21 mid-year update, you know, building permits is really carrying a whole category of permits in our, in our municipal section of revenue.
All right.
It's doing very well.
All that makes now, makes a lot of sense because I recall you making those remarks at mid-year. So that 438 from FY19 will likely surpass that for FY21 when all is said and done because of all the activity during COVID, right?
Based on trend, yes.
Based on trend, all right. That, that's where I was going with it, okay.
And I can, the software that we have allows me to run reports too, so I can, I can run a report for you tomorrow, Travis, with permits pulled. I just ran one for Mary upstairs. I think fiscal year last year was like $43 million worth of building. And the year before, '19, I think it was higher. Because our valuations on building permits goes on $10 per thousand. So some years you'll have, you know, more new houses at a higher value and some years you'll have roofing permits and solar and it's based on valuation of the work being performed.
Yeah, that'd be great.
That too, you may have, you may already have that, Travis. But I turned that into you to give to the selectmen at the next meeting to email.
Absolutely.
Okay, I have questions. At this point, you know, you've come in again below, Mark, at 0.36, Travis?
Yes.
So at this point, I'm let's stand a motion to approve the Building Inspector's FY22 requested budget of 188, oh, one, oh, is it 188? Or 185, I can't read that. What's the number, Travis?
The bottom line budget for FY22 is $155,000 and $10.
God, I need glasses. $155,000 and $10.
I'll make that motion. This is Ben Sparrow.
Thank you, Ben. Tina, is that seconded?
Yeah, I'll make a second, Tina Hein, yep.
Yeah, John Cronin, aye. Oh, they all is in favor, aye, thank you, that carries. Mark, thanks so much. Have a good night for yourself.
Thank you.
Travis, let's back, let's move, take care. Let's move your revenue update into this slot right now, hoping to get that out of the way so we can proceed with then the coronavirus community update.
Okay, so let me go back here. So a couple of things, just to reiterate on those budgets. At this time, we've not established non-union COLA adjustment for FY22. We're planning on doing that towards the end of February. It's conversations that I've had with the Select Board and the Finance Committee based on, you know, seeking more information. I think now that, you know, I'm about to go into a little bit of updated data from the last time we discussed revenue for FY22, you know, we can probably get into that conversation in the near future. But, so just to pull this up here. This is a sheet that, as I explained previously, I would continue to bring back to you as things change. It is a revenue projection. This goes on the top of essentially of an expenditure as well, so it balances out at this point as we're very early in the stage of listening to budget requests. This is just the revenue portion, you know, just go through very high level at the top here. The property tax is based on the Prop 2 and a half and prior year's new growth. So, you know, it does assume going to the max, which may not be what we want to do, but just for, you know, an exercise of seeing, you know, what is, what is the bottom line? The excluded debt goes down based on our actual debt service also going down. And then this is the number as I highlighted here. State aid, the last time I showed this to you, I was assuming a 20% reduction in UGGA, which is a portion of state aid. I think Chapter 70, you know, we've heard from the state all along was probably not going to be reduced in FY22. They feel like using their rainy day fund, they can keep Chapter 70 flat for communities, which is a major component of most municipal budgets. But one component that I was personally concerned about was the UGGA. That's, that's really more the, you know, unrestricted government aid. We did hear last week, at the end of last week, the Governor and Lieutenant Governor updated the MMA, which is, you know, our sort of professional group for municipalities that they anticipate keeping UGGA flat. So with Chapter 70 at least flat and UGGA flat, you know, that changes this. Last time I showed this to you, we were looking at a $300,000, you know, assumed reduction in state aid. That changes this and changes the bottom line. I haven't changed anything in the local receipt estimate from the last time we talked, but just for context of anybody listening, you know, in licenses and permits, which is what Mark had just updated us on, FY21 was built on an assumption of licenses and permits at $300,000 through the first half of the fiscal year. Building permits alone were $280,000. Just for one more brief sort of explanation here, FY21 here is the tax rate recap, that's how we set the tax rate. We have relatively conservative local receipts, that's the way that we build these. FY22, excuse me, but then FY18 through '20 here show the actuals, right, for comparison. We don't want to get over the aggressive. If we don't hit our revenue targets, it makes a very substantial issue for the town. So that's why this is built the way it is. FY22 with flat state aid and a couple tweaks back in local receipts that I have here for a total increase of $410,000 to a total of $355,000, higher than what we built our FY21 recap on, but still, you know, substantially lower than our actual receipts in the prior few years. Puts us in a more modest, you know, plus 2% range when it comes to revenue for us to consider while we're, while the Select Board is reviewing these budgets. As I said, this sheet generally should show on the bottom line, the expenditure as well. And as we get into a point where, you know, the Select Board has reviewed more budgets, we can add that to the conversation. But I just wanted to update you as this is a major component that's changed. The Governor did release a budget, so we received the first cherry sheet estimate. We get about six throughout the year as it progresses through the state budget cycle. And so that's what we're basing our state aid on at the moment. And so I can take any questions on that, but I just wanted to make sure I was updating you as I went, as I promised to do.
Thank you. Mr. Sparrow, any questions on the revenue presentation?
Yeah, so yeah, I was excited to hear that the Governor is thinking that we're going to see flat aid when he, I looked at the, took a look at the cherry sheets when he put them out there from, from his particular proposed budget. So just, this might just be kind of a clarification to what you were saying, but have we heard from our state representative or state senator similar comments about FY20, about the coming year FY22 for state aid that they're expecting level, level funding based on the rainy day fund?
Sorry, from who did we hear?
From our state representative and state senator, from Carolyn and Karen.
No, so I think, you know, I think we're getting to a point where it'll probably be good, as we did last year, for us to bring them back in. At this point, the Governor's has built his off of, you know, his assumptions are in there, we can look at them. I think at the same point, it would probably be beneficial for us to bring Rep. Dykema and Senator Spilka in when the next federal stimulus is passed, right? There's a lot that's going to go into that, that's really going to, the assumption right now is it's going to help the state not have to dig too far into their rainy day fund to be able to keep state aid flat, right? And I think that that's going to be the key component. We could certainly look to bring them in sooner. But I think that, you know, if what we want to hear is sort of a definitive answer, I think we got to give them a little bit more time. And just for, as an assumption, you know, I'm going off of the Governor's, as we heard from them last time, you know, that is something that they indicated when there was a little bit of trepidation of going with their state aid number before it was final, final, was no, we've been working with the Governor all along and this is, you can take this to the bank, I think is what Senator Spilka said. So I think at this point, let's give them a couple more weeks and then bring them in. And then, you know, we can certainly make sure before anything is final from a complete budget perspective that we've heard from them.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. I think my only concern about the, about all this is I, I hope, and I haven't really dug too deep beyond our, the Hallson cherry sheets, I hope there's not too much assumptions about the federal stimulus because we don't really know what or if or how it's coming. So it'll be interesting to see how that plays out, but we'll have probably more clarity in the coming weeks because they're just, you know, they're talking. So that's the only question I had, so thank you.
Thank you, Tina.
Yeah, just wanted to go back in time a little bit. Travis, when you presented the budget guidelines to departments, you, they were instructed to present any service model changes that they anticipated in FY22 related to the pandemic. So we'd be hearing from departments if they thought FY22 was going to have, or the pandemic, rather, was going to have an impact on that budget, on their budget.
Yes, and I know of some that will be coming that fall in that category. CUNA, for example, has already highlighted, you know, the way that they do meals in '21, it looks different rather than getting everybody together in a room. They do it, they've been delivering meals, that's impacted service level, it's a different model, it's a different cost. So we'll be hearing those, but for the, you know, the ones that we've heard so far, that hasn't been the story, yeah.
Okay, and then could you just circle back around to what you said about 10 minutes ago with the COLA discussion? You made some comment, I didn't quite catch it, as to when department heads would be given information about non-union COLA adjustments. You had made a comment, I was just hoping you could repeat it.
Yeah, when the, when the budget directions went out, we essentially said, you know, look primarily at anything that you know is going to be a change in personnel, right? If you're, if you're increasing hours, if you're changing anything substantial, certainly reflect that. But if you're just worried about any COLA adjustment or anything like that, that will be made at a later date when we have more information. So the information that we're looking for was going to be from the Governor, so we now have that. The next one is, as Ben said, is going to be, you know, what we're getting, what the state can count on from the feds and then, you know, any other impact that we can take out of that. So I think the timeline for that was always probably going to be late February, early March. I think we've gotten good news sooner than I expected, but in terms of a final decision, I think we're probably still on that timeline.
Okay, all right, that's helpful, thank you. All set, John?
Thanks, Tina. Thank you. Travis, just a couple of questions, or one question, one point to make. It would appear that the local aid receipts are relatively unimpacted by the COVID pandemic. Would you agree?
Yes, we've seen some impacts. And then, as I, as we just looked at with the Building Department, they've been completely, any negative impact has been completely negated by something that I quite honestly couldn't have been foreseen, which is, you know, like a rev, a run-on. I, I quite honestly couldn't have been foreseen, which is, uh, you know, like a rev, a run on building, um, permits with all these people at home wanting to do home projects. So a, as a bottom line, the local receipts is trending in, in the correct direction, yes.
So as somebody once said, when the state gets the sniffles, local government gets the flu. Uh, we, we are very beholden to the, um, to the state aid, um, that comes our way. And as you stated, the, the governor's budget is conservative or reasonable to bank on levels that we receive for FY21, which is great. Um, but I think Mr. Sparrow pointed out, we're all waiting to hear about whether or not the federal government's aid will be forthcoming under the new administration, as we had all hoped. Um, so my last comment, Travis, is I think this board asked for a memorandum to be drafted, um, from the tribe boards to our congressional delegation or congressional representation, representative, um, so that we could try to make an appeal to have additional federal aid forthcoming for, um, our use in FY22. So I think on behalf of the board, we'd like to reinitiate, uh, that request and see if we can bring it forward. I think when we talked about that before, it was under the previous administration, perhaps sometime in December. Um, but as Congress now is taking up this matter, I think the issue is timely. So if you could draft that letter from the schools, the finance committee and the select board, I, I think we'd all appreciate it.
I did speak with, um, I, I think what changed right after that was, uh, was a preemptive Biden administration before he came into office, uh, indication of the $1.9 trillion stimulus. Um, so I did end up speaking with Congresswoman Clark's office directly about that and then saying, you know, let's wait until there's a little bit more information before we craft it. So I can certainly do that now and, and get that in front of you.
Uh, no vote is necessary on this matter, is that correct, Mr. Sparrow?
That's correct.
Okay.
So if you, I think because I ran over a little bit with my time, if you want to go directly to the, um, if you want to go directly to the police candidates for number four, we can come back to coronavirus and cares after that.
I don't mind keeping Chief Cassidy waiting. I know he's always willing to accommodate us, so I think that would make a lot of sense. So let me, um, move forward with that. Mr. Mayor, we have three candidates for, uh, police officer in the town of Holliston in our waiting room. Is that, is that correct, Travis?
We do, and we have an order that will go in, which is alphabetical, and, uh, I believe Chris has that order. So when you're ready, Chair, you can just ask him to let in the first candidate, um, and, uh, it's your show.
Very good. So for the board's, um, assistance tonight, I would ask for each select person to have their own questions ready, um, two at the max, so that we can move forward with interviewing, um, each candidate in the most efficient manner possible. Chris, um, I believe the first candidate we'll be seeing is Ms. Bush, is that correct?
That is correct. I will bring her in.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Bush, have you joined us? We seem to be having some technical issues here.
No, I believe, uh, I believe Kelly Bush is with us. Can you hear us, Ms. Bush? Ms. Bush, can you hear us?
Travis, can you ask Chris, or Chris, can you tell us if this is something we could, uh, screw to come back into, um, a different position until our communication improves?
Yeah, okay, Chris. Ms. Bush, you seem to have muted yourself. Can you hear me right now? Okay, all right.
So I want to be going to the next one and I'll, uh, see if we can get in touch with her.
Okay.
All right.
The next candidate would be on my list here. Who do we have next on the alphabetical order list, Chris?
Chris Keenan.
Keenan, can you hear us? Connecting to audio. All right, Mr. Keenan, you're going to want to unmute and, uh, share your screen. There you go, great.
Hey, how's it going, everyone?
Good evening, Mr. Keenan, welcome to Holliston. How are you?
Good, how are you, sir?
Outstanding. This evening, you're going to, um, receive some questions from the select board members, um, including Mr. Ben Sparrow, Ms. Tina Heine and myself, I'm John Cronin. Uh, we'll probably be relatively brief as we make our way through the various candidates. So if you'd be so kind as to, uh, first, if you'd like to make an opening, a brief opening, public statement about your interest in this position, we will then have a couple of questions for, from each, uh, select person, okay? Go ahead.
Sure. So, uh, if you don't know, my name's Christopher Keenan. I grew up in, uh, Marlborough, Massachusetts, currently living in Natick, Mass. Um, I just recently graduated the Lowell Police Academy, um, on the Sean Collier Scholarship through MIT Police Department. And I am looking to start my police career and hopefully it's with Holliston. Um, I come from a family of seven, uh, grew up in a suburban neighborhood, just kind of like Holliston. So I understand, uh, how, uh, Holliston works, small town community, and I'm just looking forward to getting started.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, let us move on to Mr. Sparrow, if you have a couple of questions for our candidate, Ben.
Sure. Uh, good evening, Chris. Uh, good to, good to see you. Um, so I have a, a couple of things. Uh, so, uh, I'm not going to ask you about like particular policies or policing and things like that. I am not trained, I'm a, just a, the citizen, so, um, so the first question, um, that I want to ask you about is, um, community. Um, I think it's very important that, uh, a police officer, uh, and the police in general has a, um, and they have a role to play in the community in general. And I, um, I'm curious, what steps do you, would you take to become part of this community as a police officer? And how do you think the police should engage with the community in general, just from your personal perspective?
Sure. So, uh, with policing, I mean, community policing is a big part of, uh, the job. So you want to interact with the community, get them to trust you, and especially during these times right now, it's extremely difficult. Um, but as, like I said, I grew up in Marlboro, so that's a very tight-knit community. I was involved in, uh, sports, uh, Boy Scouts, anything that brought me closer to my community. And I believe that, um, police, they should be like a role model. So there was a role model at, uh, my school, he was a school resource officer. And I kind of looked up to him and that, uh, got me intrigued by the career. And I'd like to be able to do that to, uh, the community in Holliston. I want, I want to give, uh, them someone to look, look up to.
Okay. Um, great. Um, my second question, uh, relates to, uh, integrity. Um, I think that's a very important trait, uh, for a police officer to have, to have, uh, strong integrity. So could you just talk a little bit about like, what does integrity mean to you? And how do you think it relates to being a police officer?
Sure. So with policing, uh, honesty is key, but, uh, personal integrity, I think, uh, makes a big, uh, impact. So with that, I mean, it comes down to having discipline. Uh, having personal integrity means doing things that you, you know, need to get done and having the discipline to get that job or mission or whatever done on time. Or just being, uh, being able to do the right thing when no one's looking. So my, my mantra is, uh, if I'm always doing the right thing, I have nothing to worry about.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, I appreciate it, Chris.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Ben. Ms. Heine?
Hi, Chris, I'm Tina. How are you tonight?
Good, how's it going, ma'am?
Very well, thank you. Um, you do not need to call me ma'am. So I just want to say, uh, I'm really impressed by the fact that you have the Sean Collier Scholarship. I think that's a very impressive, um, note on your resume. And, um, thank you for your service in the US Army Reserves. I see that you're a sergeant. How long did it take you as a reservist to reach that position?
So it took me about six and a half years. So I've been a sergeant for about two years and I actually just put in my packet yesterday to, uh, hopefully get promoted to staff sergeant soon.
Thank you, Gun, for your service. Uh, my first question, well, so Ben stole my first question, just saying. Um, so my second question is, in your own words, can you explain how you see the impact of the pandemic, uh, over the next year or two? And how that impact will, uh, affect community policing in a community like Holliston? Specific again to what the pandemic is bringing to a town like Holliston and the residents of Holliston. How will that impact community policing in your, in your own words?
So the pandemic was just a huge, uh, speed bump, I'd like to say. Uh, working at the hospital, I saw a lot of, uh, firsthand, um, stuff in the ER regarding the pandemic. Um, but throughout the academy, it was a very big struggle. Um, but with community policing, I believe as long as, I mean, you're doing, following all the guidelines and everything, you're still able to, uh, show your face, get to know the community and gain trust and just show that you're still there. Um, doesn't mean that you have to, I know earlier in the pandemic, a lot of my buddies on police departments, uh, they had directives to pretty much just stand by and only respond to emergencies and not go out within the community. And I know now, knowing that what we know about the pandemic, you can still go out and show your face and gain the trust that's needed.
Okay, thank you. My second question is, could you describe, it's really a request, could you describe a challenging experience that you had at, uh, on the behavioral health unit at either Framingham Union, or I believe also you were in Natick, um, in a hospital in Natick as well? Um, can you describe a challenging experience on that unit and how you handled it successfully?
Sure. So I was the account manager for both Framingham and Natick Hospital Security. Uh, I got thrown into that job overnight, uh, because one of my buddies, who was actually the account manager before me, he ended up getting injured, so I woke up to a, a call saying, hey, you're in charge now, here's the deal. So I just got thrown the job to me. So I really, it was a learning experience going from a base officer to a, uh, shift supervisor to the account manager. And it was a huge step, but, uh, with that, I learned, um, all my buddies worked there, so I was pretty much best friends with everybody I worked with. But going from a best friend, a coworker to their manager was difficult. Um, but working in the Framingham ER exclusively, uh, there was a lot of, uh, behavioral health patients that came in with drug or alcohol addictions, and that was, uh, pretty eye-opening from when I started from 19 to all the way to 24. So with that, uh, I learned a lot of empathy and learning how to deal with that. Sometimes, I mean, seeing some of these people in like their worst moments of their life and being able to just give them something that would make their day a little bit better, such as, I mean, something as simple as a pillow, a blanket, or some juice and crackers. Just watching that happen, uh, gave me some hope that hopefully later down the road, as a police officer, I'll be able to do the same thing.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tina. Chris, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Chris, be a little, we'll back here. Um, my question to you is relative to the recent, uh, passage of the Commonwealth Police Reform Act. Are you familiar with the legislation?
Yes, I actually did a, uh, whole research project on the academy, uh.
What do you, what do you make of the reform with respect to a future in law enforcement for yourself? Um, do you embrace the ideas of what the reform is trying to achieve? And, and do you have any thoughts on how it would impact your policing in Holliston going forward if we hire you?
So from the research I conducted in the academy on, uh, the police reform bill, uh, as somebody who hasn't done the job yet and reading through the 500-page legislation that was passed, um, I honestly didn't see anything wrong with it. Uh, some of the departments already do some of the things that are being put in place now. So to say that it's going to be a huge uphill battle, like most people believe it is, I don't think it's going to be because people are already doing that, such as, uh, the no chokeholds or the cameras and all that type of stuff. Um, I don't see a problem with it. I actually embrace it. I think it should have been done a long time ago, but, uh, I don't think it would change the way I would do the job at all. It's just bringing transparency to the, to the department and hopefully gaining trust with the community.
That's the only question we have for this evening. We're trying again to be brief with our interviews, Chris, so I hope we appreciate that. We have a couple more to conduct this evening, so we're going to move you off to the waiting room and bring in the next candidate. I want to have, I want to, on behalf of the select board, thank you for coming in this evening and giving us your time.
Thank you very much.
Hey, Chris, if you, thank you. Chris, if you could bring the next candidate in, I'll, I'll leave it up to you. If it's, um, Ms. Bush or the other candidate, Mr. Marvel, I think his name was.
We will try Kelly Bush again.
All right. Hi, Kelly, how are you today? Can you hear us? You made it. Kelly, can you hear us?
I think we can hear her. I don't think Kelly can hear us.
She can't hear us, so we're bringing in her cell phone.
All right.
Hello.
Good evening. Hello, Kelly, can you hear us okay?
Yes, I'm sorry about that.
That's quite all right. It's a sign of the time. Glad you could join. Are you, are you joining just by audio or are you available by video?
I'm trying to turn the video off. I'm trying to figure, um, that real quick.
We can see Ms. Bush and she's, uh, contacting us by phone, John. All right, sounds good. So good evening, Ms. Bush. My name is John Cronin. I'm chair of the select board. This evening, we have my colleagues, Ben Sparrow and Tina Heine, who will offer a couple of questions each. Um, I have one question. This will be brief. We're, um, we're conducting, uh, an interview of the candidates uh, put forth by, uh, the Holliston Police Department for some vacancies upcoming. We want to thank you for your interest in, uh, Holliston and, uh, hopefully this evening, we won't be, um, taking too much of your time, but we want to give you the opportunity right out of the gate to give an opening remark or a statement about your interest in the position here in Holliston.
So, uh, I'm Kelly Bush. Um, I thank you for your time and your consideration. So, um, I currently work as a full-time police officer in the town of Sherburne. And, um, I'm familiar with Holliston from working next door for the last three and a half years. And, um, I've been, I've had the opportunity to go to in-service and work on some mutual calls with the town of Holliston and their police department specifically. And I've always been impressed with how progressive they are. Um, Holliston's a little bit larger than Sherburne, um, as far as department size and as far as their call volume as well. Um, specifically, there's a little bit more, um, room for growth. And like I said, they're a progressive department with, um, certain specialty positions, such as their domestic violence officer position, their mental health position. Um, they have elder affairs officers, school resource officers, um, for some examples. And the call volume's a little bit greater, and I know that they have, um, common call volume, including mental health and some of that stuff, which I'm specifically interested in and have a background in. Um, and like I said, it's, it's slightly larger than Sherburne, but it also still has that community feeling. Um, so those are some of the reasons why I'm interested in Holliston.
Thank you very much. Uh, we'll have a couple of questions, starting with, um, Mr. Sparrow.
Good evening, Ms. Bush. Uh, thank you very much for coming, um, and speaking to us this evening. Um, so, um, I, you know, I, um, I, I don't have, I'm not going to ask you like specific policies or policing kinds of questions. Um, I'm just a citizen, just an average person in Holliston. And, uh, so, but the first question I want to ask you about is, um, is to think about community and the role that the police play in the community. And, um, I just, I'm curious to know, what steps will you take to become a part of this community as a police officer? And how do you think the police should engage with residents and other community members?
Okay, so, um, currently in my, um, position in Sherburne, I spend a lot of time with the elder community and reaching out to them. Um, I also want to have a chance, I get out of the cruiser and I speak to people in the community. Um, one of the reasons why Holliston was so appealing to me is their different community outreach programs that they do, such as RAD, um, which is the Rape Progression Defense Course, which I am also certified as an instructor in. Um, I've actually helped with Holliston, assisted, or assisted Holliston with the course before. So those are different types of outreach to do. I think just getting out of the cruiser and speaking to people and creating just kind of a dialogue between you and the community is how you break down the barriers. and creating just kind of a dialogue between you and the community is how you break down the barriers and also build a relationship of trust. I know that Holliston has done other events like the National Night Out, Drug Take Back Program, they've done the Fill the Cruiser, the Pumpkin Patrol, and some of those other things I think are just really good outreach programs that I would love to be a part of. And then I also think the social media piece, which is really impressive, in my opinion, on Holliston's Police Department is a huge thing too. Everyone's on social media these days. So getting involved in there and being, and just getting through that way to the community is awesome. Being involved with schools, whatever you can do to kind of reach out to the community, I think is good.
Okay, great. That's, that's good. Yeah, I definitely think the Holliston Police Twitter is worth following. And my second question is related to integrity. I, I personally think that members of the police force should have, should have integrity. I think it's a very important, important thing that, to, that we, that we need to see. And so I wanted to know from you, what does integrity mean to you and how do you think it relates to being a police officer?
So I think integrity is one of the core values of being a police officer. I think it's one of the key traits a police officer has to have. In my opinion, integrity means being truthful, being transparent, always treating others how you would want to be treated or how you would want your family members to be treated and always keeping that in mind. Honesty is a huge thing. I think that's a key piece to integrity. And just standing up for what's right, even if it's not always the most comfortable thing to do.
Great. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time this evening. So thank you.
Ben, Ms. Heine.
Hi, Kelly, I'm Tina. How are you this evening?
Good, how are you?
Good. We got a chance to see that you have a dog, it appears.
Yeah, I'm so sorry about that.
That's okay. What's his name?
That's Champ.
Awesome. Well, first I want to thank you for your service in the Army National Guard. I see that you provide substance abuse policy services to the.
Yeah, so just, just to be, I was, I worked as a civilian. I just want to be clear, I wasn't.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, prior to becoming a police officer, I was the substance abuse coordinator for Massachusetts and Vermont.
Got it. Okay. And so that brings me to my first question. I, I think, well, I think it's related. The pandemic will have an impact on, has had an impact on Holliston residents and will continue to have an impact on Holliston residents. Can you explain how you anticipate the pandemic affecting community policing and your role in community policing over the next one to two years as the fallout of the pandemic sort of stays with us and changes our world around us?
Yeah, of course. So I, I unfortunately think some of the downside of the pandemic, besides the economical stuff, is that unfortunately it's causing a lot of mental health issues and substance abuse issues and potentially domestic violence related issues. I think in youth specifically, I think there's probably a little bit more anxiety and depression that we're seeing just because of the, probably the increase in isolation and probably a lack of having some of those support systems that you have in school, whether it be guidance counselors or athletics or whatever it may be for that student. With that being said, I think a lot of times when mental health and substance abuse or family problems increase, unfortunately, that requires some police presence sometimes. And I think one of the core ways that a police department can assist with stuff like that is utilizing resources such as like the jail diversion clinician, which Holliston has, and implementing her when they can. As far as other ways. Well, actually, let me backtrack. When I've been, been in Sherburne, I've used the clinician Ashley because we share her with you guys. And she's been an awesome resource. She knows everything. She's great for kids. She's great for all ages. So that's a huge piece. And then I also think, just as police officers, when you're responding to calls, depending on what it could be, you might just need to take a step back and be a little bit more empathetic to what's going on now, especially with the fallout of the pandemic and how that's really impacted people differently.
Okay, thank you. My second question is related to your role, your work with MCI Framingham inmates. You provided support to them?
Yes.
Okay, I was wondering if you could explain a challenging situation you had in that role and how you were successful in dealing with it?
Yes, so I think one of the more challenging parts about that role is it was kind of a little bit before the opioid epidemic was as large and as understood as it is now. So there was a lot of barriers as far as insurance and as, as far as getting treatment for women. And the sole purpose of the program that I worked for was to take women directly out of the prison and enter them into different treatment facilities. So I can think specifically about a female that I actually still keep in touch with, that I have worked with. And she was a kind of a high profile case. She had committed some pretty tough acts, but it was strictly because of the, her opioid addiction. And prior to that, she was actually a high level nurse. So working with her, she was kind of lost once she entered the criminal justice system. So I worked with her from the moment she got into the prison for six months prior to her release, getting her, her mass help, getting her a proper placement in a long-term residential treatment facility with stricter rules because that's what she knew she needed. And then actually getting the proper advocates and whatnot to help her with her court process. And then actually she eventually got her nursing license back and working through that process with her as well.
All right, thank you. I have no other questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tina. Kelly, I have one question and it relates to the recently enacted Police Reform Act. I'm sure you're familiar with it. You have a unique perspective, I'm sure, on this new legislation, having been a police officer for three and a half years. But I was wondering if you would share with us tonight your impression of the legislation, whether or not it will impact the way you conduct your business and what you can, what we can expect in Holliston if we hire you with respect to how you adopt these reforms.
Okay, so as far as, as the reform, I, I firmly believe that if you have been doing your job with integrity and doing the way that you should have been doing your job as a police officer this entire time, the reform act is obviously going to affect you because it's a little bit different, but it really shouldn't too much. As long as you're doing the job the proper way, then I think it's, you shouldn't be worried about how it's going to impact you too much. And then I don't think you're going to find a police officer that's against having more training, especially with like mental health issues and whatnot. I think that if I was over in Holliston, I would conduct myself the way I have in the last three and a half years in Sherburne with integrity, having good morals and being compassionate, having good de-escalation skills. I've never had a complaint against me in my entire career and I would plan to bring that over to Holliston.
Thank you so much. Compliment you on your resume. It's quite impressive. Between Mr. Sparrow, Ms. Heine, they touched on some of the elements, but citizens at home should recognize that not only are you a sitting officer in Sherburne, but through your service with the town of Framingham, the SMOC Women's Transition Program, and some other work you did right after you got out of college, a very well-rounded candidate. So thank you for showing interest in Holliston, for spending a few minutes with us tonight. I know it's brief, but yet we're trying to make our way through an agenda and some of the other candidates. So thank you again for joining us tonight. We appreciate it. Stay safe.
Thank you. Sorry about my technical difficulties.
No worries at all. Chris, if you'd be so kind as to bring the last candidate in, I believe it's Mr. Marvel. Mr. Marvel, can you hear us?
You're gonna have to unmute yourself. There you go.
Got it.
Good evening. How are you, sir?
Good, how are yourself, sir?
We're doing quite well. Welcome to Holliston. This evening, we're going to spend some time interviewing you for your position of interest here in Holliston as a police officer. Joining me are my colleagues Ben Sparrow and Ms. Tina Heine. We're going to ask a couple of questions each. We won't take too much of your time, but we want to give you the first opportunity to introduce yourself to Holliston, maybe make a position, your, excuse me, position statement, your, your interest known to us and make an opening statement. Please go right ahead.
Well, first of all, let me thank you all for hosting this meeting via Zoom. I know it's trying times we're living in right now, but we can make the best of everything and technology obviously helps out. I go by Bob, Bob Marvel. I'm 34 years old. I currently live in Bethel Township. It's Pennsylvania, Philadelphia suburb, probably about 30 minutes away from Philadelphia. I grew up in Upper Arby Township, which directly borders Philadelphia. And that's currently where I work now as a police officer. Like I said, I'm 34 years old, I'm married. My fifth wedding anniversary is coming up next week. My wife and I have two children. My son is six years old. My daughter is four years old. I started my law enforcement career 17 years ago. I've had a very fortunate career. Worked for four departments throughout my career, two of which were part-time job opportunities that progressed into full-time. My experience as far as police work goes, currently detective with the Upper Arby Police Department. I've been a detective three years now. Was on the SWAT team for Upper Arby. Was in patrol when I first started in Upper Arby. I was assigned to the United States Drug Enforcement Administration as a task force officer when I worked in Darby Borough Police. That was two years until I took a job with Upper Arby and I had to come off it. I was on the SWAT team as well in Darby Borough, the Annie Crime Unit, prior to working in Darby Borough, worked in Collingdale Borough. There I was, worked in undercover narcotics officer. I was a part of the mountain bike team and also Uniform Patrol. Prior to that, Delaware County Park Police, where I was a patrol officer. I started off my career in law enforcement at 18 years old and this is where I am now. The reason I applied for Holliston is my wife is originally from Foxborough, Massachusetts. Her roots are very strong in Foxborough. Her entire family's there in the surrounding area. My family on my side, very small. We're very distant, don't have much connection with them anymore. So the only thing really keeping me where we are now is my job. My wife's currently a stay-at-home mom. I work, I provide for my family and, you know, the way life's going, we want to give our kids the opportune, opportunity to be closer with family, grow up with their cousins, grow up with their aunts and uncles and, you know, live a life up there in Massachusetts closer to family. So that's the reason why I'm applying and hoping to progress in the hiring process with the Holliston Police Department.
Thank you, Bob. We're going to start questions with my colleague Ben Sparrow. Ben, it's all yours.
Good evening, Mr. Marvel. Thank you very much for joining us this evening.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. I appreciate it as much as I can.
Good to meet you too. So a couple of questions. So I'm not going to ask you about specifics about policing and things like that. That's beyond my, my, my area of expertise. But as a resident of Holliston, I think one of the things that I think is very important for police officers and the police force in general is that they're members of the community. So my question for you, first question is, what steps will you take to become a part of the community as a police officer? And how do you think the police should engage with residents and community members?
Well, during my job search for police officer jobs in Massachusetts, I tried to do my research on the towns that I apply for. And I gauge them off of being able to move into the community myself and be a part of the community. You know, I'm not just looking to come up there, get a job and, you know, be on my way. Holliston, after doing my research on the town, it seems like a very nice town, a town that I could see myself moving into and being a part of the community, like you're asking. Also, my wife has a teaching degree. She's also looked into teaching jobs. I think there was a few available positions within the school district. So that actually, you know, got our interest, made us more interested in Holliston to be able to both work in the town and hopefully, once we get established in Massachusetts, be able to move in the, to the community. My son is six years old, like I had mentioned. He's big into ice hockey, as am I. I played ice hockey my entire life, up until the point I started coaching him. So I'd like to get involved in the ice hockey program, the local ice hockey program, not only to coach my son, but being a police officer in the community, being able to, that be one of my outreaches of being a part of community events and community sports. So, you know, it's, it's big for us to be involved in the community and not only as profession, but, you know, as a neighbor to, you know, have that, that close knit bond. And, you know, from visiting Massachusetts so often with our family, it seems like the neighborhoods and the towns up there are very close knit. And that's something that I not only want to be a part of, I want my family to be a part of as well. And I'd like my kids to be able to grow up in that type of environment.
Okay, great. That's great. Yeah, Holliston is a wonderful community. I, I can, I've moved away and came back. So I can certainly attest to the fact that it has a draw and it's a pretty special place.
Yes.
So beyond being a member and engaging with the community, I think one of the things that I really look for in my police force is, is showing integrity. And could you talk about integrity specifically? How, what does it mean to you? And how do you think it relates to being a police officer?
I think that's one of the, like, the integrity is the foundation of police work. And if you don't have integrity, you probably don't have any business being a police officer or in law enforcement. Integrity now is such a, it's such a big thing with the world events today and the way that, you know, the public views the police officer. I think if you don't have integrity, you know, what do you have? The integrity of being a police officer is, it's the bridge between the uniform and the public and, you know, being able to deal with the public. You have to be able to hold your help, yourself to a higher standard as a police officer, but also be able to bring yourself down to the level, not when I say bring yourself down, meaning holding yourself to a higher standard, but at the same time, being an equal to the members of community. And I think the integrity is, you know, being true to yourself, being true to your family, being true to your kids, teaching your kids the right way, showing them what it's like to be a respectful, productive member of society. I mean, it's just the building blocks of being an all-around decent human being.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Mr. Marvel. I really appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you. I appreciate yours.
Thank you, Ben. Tina?
Hi, Bob. Nice to meet you. I'm Tina.
Hi, Tina. It's nice to meet you as well.
So you're a mountain biker?
Yes.
Okay. And you were on the mountain bike patrol unit for one of the departments you worked for?
Correct.
Very cool. Okay, you know about our Upper Charles Rail Trail?
I've read a little bit about it. I'd be lying to you if I said anymore that, you know, that I, I knew more about it, but I have read about it in my research.
Okay, it's a great, great feature, especially for someone who's a mountain biker. So my first question, so I'm, I'm drawn to the fact on your resume that you are a SWAT team member down in Pennsylvania.
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to hear what experiences from your time on the SWAT team you would bring to the Holliston Police Department, to the fellow officers you'd serve alongside with, and also to the community? Are there any experiences that would translate to either those you serve alongside of or those you serve for? From your time on SWAT team?
So as of recently, our department has had a, a new superintendent that has taken over. So he, he's changing the direction of the department. So as of like last week, I'm no longer on the SWAT team because I'm a detective. So he wanted detectives being fully devoted to detective work and patrol officers to be on the SWAT team. So with that being said, I was on a SWAT team for like seven years total, so I do have my experience still. But with that being said, we've done a lot of active shooter trainings for schools and office buildings. Although I'm not an instructor, I've received numerous hours in, in-person training. And I've also been an instructor when we went to schools and local businesses to be able to show what we expect of, you know, the teachers and the students if they were ever put into that position, as well as any local businesses on how to respond and, you know, what the best thing that they can do for themselves if they were ever presented with that type of situation. As far as other things with the SWAT team, you know, I've attended monthly trainings. You know, our weapons qualifications were once a month with, you know, handgun, rifle and less lethal ammunitions. Unfortunately, I'm not an instructor. Unfortunately, I'm not an instructor in any of those, but I also have the knowledge from doing it so long. And I would be able to, hopefully if the opportunity was given, be able to get an instructor course and put my knowledge to use in training the officers of Holliston and in certain weapons aspects, whether it be lethal or less lethal. But you know, as far as a SWAT team goes, it's a last resort. So we've always tried to do whatever we could before we had to go to the last possible resort, which is make an entry into whether it was a, you know, a business or a residence to, to get the bad guy or you know, calm a situation. So it, it's a lot of tactics that lead up to that as far as, you know, negotiations, you know, less lethal approaches, calling them out, using a loudspeaker. You know, the negotiators, giving them opportunities to, to resolve the situation before we have to go in. Now, with that experience, you know, I've always been a fan of, you know, practicing, whether I was on the team or not, of how to, you know, properly use the tactics that I've learned to resolve a situation with regular patrol officers. So you know, if there was an open door at a business that was an alarm call, show them how to properly clear the building. So that, you know, in a tactical way, you know, not leaving themselves vulnerable for any type of attack. Or you know, for them to be harmed if there was a suspect that was armed or you know, could possibly be a threat while in the building.
Okay. All right. I'm gonna shift gears just a little bit and ask you about the pandemic. The pandemic will, is having and will continue to have an impact on the residents of this community. And I'm wondering how you feel that will affect community policing over the next year or two as the pandemic plays out and continues to affect residents? How does the pandemic affect, impact community policing?
It's, in my personal opinion, it's had a great impact. Well, when I say great, it's, it's detrimental to community policing, you know, with social distancing. And you know, the businesses that have been shut down, it gives police officers less of an opportunity to interact with the community. From my research, you know, Holliston Police Department, very pro community policing department. It seems like they always have some type of event that's going on. Whether it be shop with a cop, the Toys for Tots, you know, any type of activity going on in the community, Holliston Police seem to be, you know, in, well involved in interacting. And unfortunately with the pandemic and the lockdowns in place, it hurts us. Not being able to have those interactions as we did in the past. But I think moving forward, we can try and do whatever we can to still have that interaction. I mean, I think this Zoom meetings is great, you know, every, we can social distance, but still have some type of line of communication to the general public. But I think in a safe outdoor environment, in-person reaction or interaction could still work as long as social distance is maintaining. But I think now more than ever is the time for police officers to be interactive with the community. Unfortunately, over the last couple of years, you know, there's been some bad incidents where, you know, police officer integrity and the job itself has been questioned by the general public. And being in a global pandemic where we can't have that interaction doesn't do us any good. So I think, you know, the leadership in the police department, you know, they seem resilient and they can come up with different ways. And you know, I'd also like to be able to give my input on ways to, to know, interact with the computer, the community regardless of the pandemic. If I was given the opportunity, but you know, where there's a will, there's a way. And I think that we can overcome the hard times that we're in right now.
Okay. Thank you very much, Bob.
Thank you.
Bob, I have one question, but before I add my typical one question, I have a follow up from Ms. Hines comments regarding your SWAT experience and so forth. I observed that, you know, you'd, you'd be interested in coming to work for the Town of Holliston, which has a population of about fifteen thousand people.
Yes.
Upper Darby has over five times that many people. Clearly many more individuals to, to police and deal with. Is it gonna be different working for a smaller department than it is for one that is so large and, and so diverse?
I, yeah, absolutely, it would be different, but I don't think that it would be different in a bad way. I think the, the small, close knit community of fifteen thousand, it's, it's comparing apples to oranges, basically. You know, Holliston is a small, close knit town where his Upper Arby is, although it's not considered a city, it's a city. But the, the call volume differences, working in Holliston would be able, I'd be able to have a better interaction with the community and be able to vote, to vote more time to their specific needs or whatever they may be calling the police for. In their time of need, I would be able to delegate more time to help them with their solution. Whereas Upper Arby being more of a city department, when we're dealing with the public, we're, we're giving them the best service that we possibly could, but we're also in a fight against call volume where, you know, we, we have to go to a call, respond to a call, find a solution. You know, handle the, the matter the best that we can, and then we're on to the next call. And that continues in that way for the twelve hour, eight hour shift that we're working. Holliston, you know, the call volume is going to be a little different just because of the geographical area. And you know, I would be able to devote more time. So I don't think that it's a bad thing. I just think that it's two, two completely different aspects of policing. It's like
Let me, that, that's good. I get your response in that. Let me, let me move on to my question that I've asked the candidates. Are you familiar with the, the recently enacted police reform bill here in Massachusetts, Bob?
Very little, to be honest.
I highly encourage you to read the law or familiarize yourself with, with the act. It is fundamentally changing in Massachusetts, the way policing is done. It's adding, among other things, more transparency through civilian oversight and some other impacts that will definitely change the way not only Holliston polices citizens, but indeed the rest of the Commonwealth. But let me speak to a point maybe more in general terms, because you alluded to it earlier about the events in the last year involving police officers. Interactions with citizens that has drawn strong and negative criticisms towards your profession. How does police reform impact the way that you plan to be a police officer in Holliston going forward?
I don't think it's gonna change the way I do my job. I've always done my job by the books. You know, you don't have anything to worry about if you do your job correctly. And you know, the police reform bill, they can impose as many guidelines as they'd like, and I'd, I'd follow them to, to the word. To take them as the gospel itself. But it doesn't, it, it's not going to change how I interact, because I've never interacted with the public in a bad way. I've always done things by the book and nothing that would be questionable that I would have to worry about the police reform bill affecting the way I do my job.
Thank you. I have one administrative question for you, Bob, because you are an officer coming in from out, maybe through Travis. Can you confirm that you, your certifications, if you will, to being a police officer from Pennsylvania transfers into Massachusetts? Or do you have to go through the academy here?
No, as, as far as I understand, so when, just to give you a little bit of brief background, when my wife and I got together years ago, she was living in Massachusetts at the time, and I was looking to get hired by a police department back then. So I actually submitted all my documentation to the Police Training Commission. It was a resume, cover letter, academy certification, my grades and whatever have you. And I actually received a letter from the Training Commission that said if I was hired by a department, that I wouldn't have to go back to the academy. They would waive the training based upon, you know, the academy hours, the curriculum of the academy and my work experience. Now, obviously my work experience has gotten far better. And my resume has, has been built a lot since twenty thirteen, I think the letter was dated, that they would make the waiver. So I don't have you know, any doubts that the commission would enact favorably to my request to have the police academy waived again.
Understood. So just a note to Travis, if you could just check on that reciprocity through that and MPTC, that would be great. Check with the chief. Bob, I want to thank you very much for joining us this evening. It was a pleasure meeting with you, but can only imagine how spirited the conversations have been in your household the last several years. There are three hundred and fifty one communities in Massachusetts and you married a woman from Foxborough, and I think you know what's in Foxborough. So all the best to you. And I know the Eagles have won up on us, but that's okay.
I know, that would, that, that's my luck, you know, I converted to a Pats fan and then shortly thereafter, the Eagles beat them in the Super Bowl, but you know.
It leads to great marriages, trust me.
Well, that's what I said. I gave, I gave up the Eagles for the Pats and you know, my wife gave up the Bruins for the Flyers. The Flyers are my first love and that, that's what makes our marriage work.
Well, I'm back with my colleagues this evening. Thank you again for joining us. We wish you all the best going forward. You'll be hearing from us soon. Thank you.
Thank you for all your time. I appreciate the opportunity.
So Travis, I think at this point, the board's had a chance to review three candidates put forth by Chief Stone, Holliston Police Department. What I'd like to do at this point of Tina and Ben is to first check with you to find out are you prepared at this point to take a consensus on who is recommended for hire? And then following that consensus vote, we can then prioritize which candidates you would put in your first position, your second position and your third position. We currently have one vacancy. We are projecting another vacancy in FY twenty one. The third vacancy is something that would be envisioned likely in FY twenty two. So at this point, I'll open it up to discussion. We'll start with Ben if you have any feedback on the three candidates.
Um, I think the, all three of them are excellent candidates. I, I think we have our work cut out for us. I do feel comfortable choosing and ranking one, two and three based on our conversations and some of the background information that we have of these three candidates. But I think they were all three were very, were excellent candidates. And I think we would be, we, we would be lucky enough to have any of them joining the police force.
So you're recommending hire on all three?
Well, I thought you were asking for if I was ready to make a record. Yeah, if, if like, if it came to that, I probably would say, yeah.
Right. At this point, we want to rule in or rule out who's in play and then we'll prioritize. So you're, you're good with all three and then we'll prioritize after this, right?
I am good with all three and we can prioritize after that.
Tina, your thoughts?
Yeah. So likewise, I just have one, one comment, one clarifying point. The integrity piece was wonderful. I thought that was great. They all answered that question from, I think you two each kind of addressed it very strongly, very consistently. And so I'm like Ben on this one. I, I think all, any one of the three is a good addition. I'm going on an assumption that there's not a particular set of skills that Chief Stone and the police department is looking for. Like I, I heard two, from two of the candidates, I heard two different sets of skills. So I'm gonna go on the assumption, when I say any one of the three, that there, there wasn't a strong preference from the chief. Does that make sense? That they're not looking to fill a particular set of skills or experiences from the hire. They're looking to bring on a, an overall strong candidate. So with that assumption at, at play, yeah, I'm willing to consider any one of the three and then go on to prioritize.
All right. And I would agree with my colleague. So at this point, we'll start again with Ben. If you'd like to tell me who you would prefer in one, two and third spot, please?
I think I would prefer, I want to make sure I get their names exactly right here when I do this. I, I prob, I would prefer, number one would be Kelly, Kelly Bush. I do think that Robert Marvel would probably be my second choice and Christopher Keenan would be my third choice.
Okay. Tina?
My first choice is Kelly Bush. My second choice is Bob Marvel and my third choice is Chris Keenan.
Excellent. I concur with both of you. So at this point, I would like to entertain a motion to Travis, in, with respect to the motion, should it be to an extended offer or recommend for hire? How would you like the motion to proceed for this position?
You can recommend for hire and I'll work with Chief Stone on that.
All right. Understanding that the board has a preference for Ms. Kelly Bush in the first position, Mr. Bob Marvel in the second position, and Mr. Chris Keenan in the third position. I'll entertain a motion to extend an offer of conditional employment to Ms. Kelly Bush, Mr. Marvel and Mr. Keenan in that order as openings occur.
I'll make that motion. This is Ben Sparrow.
Tina, hi. Yes, I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Ben Sparrow, aye.
You got that Travis?
All set.
All right, great. Let's move on to the next part of our agenda, which originally started with coronavirus community update. Our, our fire chief, excuse me, has been waiting patiently. Good evening, chief. How are you?
Evening. I'm exceptional. Thank you.
That's great to hear. So if you'd like to proceed with the community update, we will also try to draw in, following your presentation, some feedback from the Council on Aging, which I want to inform the public on. So there'll be a little bit of a feedback loop on the first item that you're speaking of tonight. So why don't you proceed with the presentation?
Okay, great. Thank you so much. So as a student of history, I would like to note that it has been one year since the first case of the coronavirus was identified in Massachusetts. And unfortunately, since then, we've had five hundred thousand residents who have tested positive for the virus in that ensuing year. But for the first time, probably since June, this is one of those weeks where I'm really, really excited to give my update, because our numbers, our trends are in the direction that we like to go. There are only twenty two new cases since last Monday. And since last Monday, there have been over a hundred and fifty cases, which we have taken off of our active list. We took a hundred and twenty seven cases off last Tuesday. Twenty five cases off today. So we are, we are definitely trending in the correct direction. We're down to sixty nine active cases, which are spread out over fifty four addresses. As you can see, we've only have a couple clusters at single family homes, many fewer than we had in previous weeks. We still have the one existing cluster at the elderly housing complex. That's more than a month old. I'm still waiting. IR nursing consultant to be told that we can take that off our list. We still do have an active cluster at our long term care facility, which we do have concerns about, because we don't want to see more spread inside that facility. And then we've got single cases at single family homes, elderly housing complex, and just a few cases at multifamily dwellings. Next slide, please. So you do see the big jump there in the last couple of days when we were able to take a whole bunch of cases off both last Tuesday as well as today. But the numbers are trending in the correct direction. Next slide. This was an addition that we've added in the last couple of weeks, which is to compare not only our percent positivity, which is in the orange, to the state positivity, which is the blue. But also on the other access, we're also looking at the total number of tests. And the bar that shows the total number of tests shows what our community risk designation from the Department of Public Health is. And I am very pleased to report that with a positivity rate down at four point three one last Thursday, when the state published their, their updated information for the week, we are once again back in the yellow. So again, all of these are, are metrics that are indicating that we are going in the correct direction. Next slide, please. You'll see of several more communities in our area, like we did, were able to transition from red to yellow. So again, there's a nice pocket developing here in the Metro West region. Couple of our neighbors are still on the red, but we are very hopeful for them that they might see some of the same improvements. Next slide. No changes to this graphic, which was produced by the state. This is last week's update. Again, we are just now starting to see the individual seventy five plus in phase two, while phase one continues to be eligible. So as I indicated, all phases, all, all priority groups in phase one are eligible to receive shots. As well as individuals seventy five and older are also eligible. I would note that following the question that the Council on Aging Senior Senate Director asked last week about how it is that our, our older adults in town are going to be able to, to register for those vaccines. We, we had a very good working group meeting last week. I do see that Linda Marshall's on the, on the call, and I know you said you'll be deferring to, for some comments from her. But we, we had a really good meeting of the minds. I honestly believe that we are much stronger and much smarter when we bring a whole bunch of different perspectives together and and much smarter when we bring a whole bunch of different perspectives together and we brought the right people into the, the virtual room to brainstorm on how we can best address the needs because it's not just a, a situation where we need to figure out how we can register them because some, uh, individuals in that category may be challenged by the technology and may not be, uh, either as comfortable with the technology or able or have access to a computer, uh, and therefore we're gonna need help. Uh, fortunately, the state has indicated that this week they will be launching a, a phone, uh, bank to be able to help people register, but that has not been initiated yet. But in our conversations with the, the Senior Center Director and, and her staff and other volunteer coordinators, we realized it's not just an issue of helping people register, but it's also a, a case where because a lot of the testing sites are not, excuse me, the vaccine administration sites are not necessarily proximate to our community, uh, the other challenge that we're facing is transportation. And therefore, part of our discussions last week in the working group, uh, is identifying the fact that we've got a great community here in Holliston. People are, are very willing to volunteer and step up. And so our key in the next couple of weeks is going to be to figure out first, who is willing to, uh, come alongside of the COA and either help register or help transport or both. Um, and then, uh, just figuring out how to get the word out so that we get the right volunteers who are willing to work with a, a special population that sometimes needs a little bit more patience, uh, and recognizing also that when somebody commits to giving a ride to someone to a vaccination site, that it's not just a twenty-minute round trip, that there may be, uh, a line that they need to help them wait with. They may need have access issues. Um, so we brought the right people together. I genuinely believe that in the coming weeks, we're gonna be able to roll this up for the community. Um, a few individuals for our community have already been able to get appointments for phase two, uh, priority one, but, uh, as the state continues to get a larger allocation from the federal government, as they build out their, um, their phone bank to be able to make phone reservations, and as we marshal at the local level, uh, volunteers to help those who need technical assistance or transportation assistance, uh, I, I'm really very confident that we're gonna be able to help, uh, meet a real need. Um, next slide. Uh, so as I indicated, uh, some of the sites aren't too close to us. Uh, the state continues to, uh, stand up additional vaccination sites, both mass vaccination as well as at places like supermarkets and pharmacies, and they continue to add additional, uh, icons on the map. So we would certainly encourage folks to, to check the state website and continue to watch for additional sites in our area. Uh, a lot of the sites for them, or a lot of the appointments for the mass vaccination sites, uh, open up on Thursdays because it's at that point that, uh, these sites know what their allocation is going to be in the subsequent week. Next slide. So although we've seen very positive trends in the last couple of weeks with our numbers locally and the number of cases and increased testing, uh, we do want to continue to, uh, remind folks, uh, of the importance of staying vigilant. And just because some individuals are, are fortunate to have the vaccine and be, be eligible in, in phase one and now at the beginning of phase two, uh, we cannot let up on our messaging. And so you will continue to see us, uh, putting images like this out on our social media and perhaps on the website, uh, reminding folks that the decisions that they make, um, do have consequences. And, and we see here a graphic that just came out from the state, uh, basically emphasizing that what looks like a, an innocent party for a college student, uh, when they then come home and interact with family at, uh, could have very dire consequences for a, a family member with underlying risk factors. So, um, we're not trying to scare anybody. We're not trying to guilt them. We're just trying to remind them of the reality and especially with all of these new variants, uh, the different strains that are, are being, uh, found out through testing and through surveillance. It's important for us to remind people to continue to keep their distancing, uh, limit crowds, wash their hands, wear their face coverings, and, uh, just do everything that, that the public health experts are saying. And with that, uh, next slide, I will pause and see if there are any questions for this portion.
Thank you, Mike. My colleague, Ben Sparrow.
Uh, thank you, chief. Uh, as always, I appreciate it. Um, I'm curious to hear, um, uh, from Linda Marshall, um, about some things. So just to sort of give you a little perspective, like from, from my, uh, weekend, last weekend, trying to get my ninety-one-year-old grandmother, uh, an appointment, and it was arduous, I would say. I mean, it involved me going to get an insurance card, taking a picture of an insurance card, and my wife was on, she said she was trying to get Beatles tickets, is basically what she was trying to do. And, um, so it was very difficult. It wound up, um, so she wound up having to get an appointment at Keith Tech, even though it was for Framingham residents, they allowed her to get the appointment, so we don't even know if it's gonna take place. But then, um, she had pre-registered to get an appointment and, um, they contacted her about getting an appointment. So we were kind of, it was, it's, it's not an easy task to get an appointment for a vaccine. It's too complicated for people like myself and my wife, who are pretty tech savvy. I can only imagine what it must be like for some of these folks who are trying to figure this out and navigate this. And then we're talking to other folks like in other states and, you know, uh, Council on Aging contacted directly some Keith folks in Connecticut and said, hey, you know, we're gonna get you a vaccine. And then we have another, a friend in New Hampshire who was contacted by their doctor. And it's, it's disappointing. Um, it, this isn't on you. This is just more of a general comment about the, this type of thing. And I think that, you know, it, this should be an easier process, um, in a, in a state like ours. It should be more straightforward. It should be easier to engage with and people should be able to get what they need if they're in the, the group that needs it. And so my, that's really all I wanted to say that, you know, this is, uh, it was a very frustrating experience for everybody involved. She has an appointment, which is great, and she's gonna be able to get the vaccine. And I don't think, I don't remember exactly where it is. I think it's Newton Wellesley, um, she's gonna wind up going to, but at least, you know, at least that got done. But it was, uh, it was, it was frustrating. So I can, you know, I imagine that's what Linda's gonna speak to. Uh, and I think there's something we need to do, and I'm glad to hear that we're trying to do more to help, uh, help our seniors to be able to get these appointments and to get, uh, transportation and assistance to be able to do this. So thank you for doing that, and, uh, I look forward to hearing that it's an easier process for other folks who are trying to do the same thing. So thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ben. Tina?
Yeah, so, uh, Linda, you are gonna speak after in, in a minute? Okay, yeah, no, I'm very curious to hear what you think, um, how the situation's going, the experiences you're hearing from the, the community you serve, as well as any, any assistance the board can give you. I, I think, again, very interested to hear what you have to say. I just have one check, question for Chief Cassidy. Uh, in terms of the long-term care cluster that you referred to, the long-term care facility in Holliston, has, have they received vaccinations? They're phase one, um, residents of a long-term care facility. So where, where are they? Do you know where they are in the vaccination schedule?
Yeah, they, they were part of the federal pharmacy partnership program. So they would have already received both staff as well as residents, uh, would have received those through the, the partnership.
Okay, so we're confident that they'd at least started the vaccination process. So therefore, in short time, they'll, they'll have completed that process.
Correct.
Okay, that's good news. All right, thank you. That's it.
Thanks, Tina. Um, yes, so at this point, um, I wanted to bring in, uh, a conversation that, uh, started last week. Ironically, I was, uh, at Town Hall last, uh, Thursday morning, meeting with the schools on CARES Act, and we spontaneously at the end of the meeting started talking about creative ways to help our seniors, um, uh, deal with this new online system. Uh, there was some creative thinking in that group, uh, primarily from the superintendent and others. Um, and it was a very, very, you know, fruitful conversation. I remember talking to Mike Cassidy afterwards, saying, you know, we should see this through. Um, later that afternoon, Linda Marshall sent out an SOS email to many stakeholders in town. Um, the Council on Aging had been besieged with many, many calls from seniors across our town who were encountering the same problems that, um, other seniors across the Commonwealth have endured as they tried to get in line virtually, um, to receive the vaccine. Um, after some back and forth with, um, uh, Linda and, uh, members of the Council on Aging, through Travis, we set up a large group conference call, uh, Friday morning. Uh, the conference call included members of the Board of Health, Youth and Family Services, the Select Board, our Fire Chief, Police Chief, members of, uh, the Finance Committee, I think, joined it, um, all with the spirit of, um, throwing out ideas on ways for a small community like Holliston to help serve our seniors in a way that they deserve. Um, we don't have all the answers. We certainly don't have all the resources, but we recognize that doing nothing wasn't an option. Um, so we, I think as a group, um, settled on the idea that we should at least try to separate two factors. One is seniors needed help with the, uh, intake process, how to sign up, how to get an appointment. Um, Chief Cassidy informed us that there were complications to that process because seemingly whichever location you were looking to get your vaccine at had a different set of rules. Um, there was, um, some concerns over whether or not seniors had the right information at hand when they were trying to make, um, any, any, uh, selected appointments, i.e. insurance cards. The second piece is the transportation. Um, I think practically it's, it, it, it was something that maybe most people didn't acknowledge, but it is February, uh, it is relatively cold outside. Um, asking people seventy-five years of age or older to queue in a line for a vaccine, uh, like others have, uh, to date was probably overlooked. Um, but it's not, it was not overlooked by this group. Linda Marshall and the Council of Aging, um, and her team, um, have a very active understanding of what our seniors in Holliston need. Um, during the call, uh, she was gracious enough to introduce us to some of the efforts they've been doing under very difficult circumstances. The volume of calls you have to appreciate is consuming a big part of their day. We decided to, um, impart, uh, with the Council on Aging, some resources. Um, our Technology Director, Chris Mayo, started working with the Council, um, in part of Linda's staff, including our Deputy Brian, to help figure out a streamlined pro, process for seniors who may need assistance with, um, the intake to, uh, get there. And, um, I hope Linda has a brief update for us on the process to date. I'm not sure if we have anything ready for prime time, but it, you know, in a matter of two business days, um, seniors in Holliston should know that their leaders and especially their Council on Aging are trying really hard to find a path to make this process easier for them. Um, and then secondarily, and down the road, try to envision a way to allow volunteers, um, or services to transport seniors who may need assistance getting to and from the vaccination sites, uh, to do so safely. Um, that part is still under construction, but at this point, I'd like to ask Linda, uh, Marshall, our Council on Aging Director, to give us some feedback on progress within the COA and possibly even some, uh, recent feedback from the state on the, um, vaccination program for seniors. So Linda, good evening.
Good evening.
But thanks so much for joining us. I know you've been busy, but if you could take a few minutes to inform the citizens of Holliston what you've been up to, we'd greatly appreciate it.
Yes, we have been extraordinarily busy. Um, we, we have seen an uptick in calls coming over the last few weeks as, as vaccines were starting to be, um, given out, as this first group was approaching their time, the seniors. Um, and then the moment Governor Baker announced, um, we were going into phase two and the seventy-five and older were in that first group, our phones just blew up. Um, the seniors are one of the groups that have been most isolated throughout this whole process. They're told to stay home, do not go out, do not see your family. Um, they don't have jobs, so they don't have other reasons that they're leaving their house. Many of them have adult children that are doing their shopping, so they don't, they're not even going to the store. And that's keeping them safe, and it's keeping them as safe as we can, but it's also taking a toll on them. So understandably, they're extremely anxious, um, to get a vaccine and to be able to start at least interacting with other people at some level. Um, the struggle, as Ben was saying, to, uh, sign up for the vaccine is challenging. Um, Chief Cassidy, I don't know if you have any more information on the call center. The information that we have been given to date is that it's actually going to be, you can call in to say you want help to get an appointment. It's not gonna actually take place during that call. They're gonna take your information, what locality you're looking into, any timeframe, and then somebody will call them back. At least that's the last update that I have, um, and how the call center is going to work. So I see, if it proceeds in that direction, that will add further frustration, frustration to our folks. We are equally hearing from the adult children of this, our seniors, who are trying to schedule them for appointments. Um, and we probably almost get more anger from the adult children and frustration than we're getting from the seniors who are able to take our message, to be patient for just a little bit longer, that we are figuring this out, we are going to help them, that we are here for them. We know it's not an ideal situation. Um, hopefully, as more site, vaccination sites open up, that we'll see some that are closer to us, that will help tremendously, and some of the smaller sites that will be much less threatening to a senior and less challenging to a senior who may have some mobility issues or, um, even if they can walk okay to stand in line, as somebody said, um, would be a challenge for any length of time. So what we're trying to do right now is identify actually how many seniors are looking for assistance and what type of assistance they're looking for. Um, whether they're looking for assistance only to set up an appointment, but then they can get themselves there, whether they need just transportation, or whether they need assistance with all of it. Um, I reached out on social media over the weekend to the various Holliston sites that I'm on through Facebook. Um, so some of the calls we got today were related to that. At the time I did that, I was under the impression that it wasn't gonna snow till later and we would actually be at work and have more telephone support today, but it is what it is. Um, our next plan was to set up a robocall that I was going to do today, um, to the seventy-five and elders, asking them if they will need help to please give us a call so we can just sign them up, so we can see how many people need help and what type of help they need. I was going to reach out to Chief Cassidy if later in the week he could do the same to the rest of the population. That way we can divide them up a little bit in terms of how many calls we're gonna get in one day. Um, it is a challenge to keep up with our phones right now. Um, not to mention trying to do the other duties that we're responsible for and the needs that are still out there day to day with our seniors. Um, but see that as a first step. Chris Mayo has been working with my Assistant Director, Brian, um, to develop a basic intake form. But for the process to proceed, um, both a computer will be necessary, but whoever is doing that is looking like will also have to have the senior on the phone. Um, that there's medical questions that are part of the process. Um, each site's still having different information that they're looking for, so you can't just say everyone's looking for this. Um, so we're trying to get a handle. We have probably about a dozen volunteers right now through the Senior Center that are willing to help with the process. Um, and once we have a better idea of how many people are truly looking for assistance, um, we can then determine how many additional folks we may need to help. Again, then that's separate from the transportation piece, which is a whole nother issue in itself that we need to figure out.
Linda, are you currently recruiting volunteers for this effort, or are you still trying to figure out what to do with those resources when?
Well, softly I am. As, as a result, for example, of the, um, postings that I did over the weekend, we had a couple of people reach out and volunteer their services to help. Other people that work with us through other rounds, they might be other organizations that work in, you know, do special events with us or whatever, some of them as well have reached out and said, if we can help with any of this process, um, we would be happy to help, as well as we reached out to our senior volunteers who have the computer skills to be able to help with this.
So, um, at this point, I, I would ask anybody on the Zoom if they've got any questions related to this matter. Um, again, it's a very fluid situation. The board understands that. The Council on Aging understands that. We're trying to do the best we have with our resources, but, um, are there any questions from anyone on the Zoom? Hearing none. Linda, if you'd like to give us a sense of, you know, where things are trending over the next week or so, um, given the importance this matter has on our seniors, especially as we step down then to the sixty-five and older group, um, I would welcome you to join us during this portion of our meeting, uh, next week, uh, to give us updates and information. Um.
Next, next week I actually present my budget to you?
So you'll be.
I'll be here anytime.
Outstanding. Um, the, the hope is that, uh, whatever we can provide with respect to resources, um, is, is helpful to our seniors. And as things change and evolve, as they are every day in this world, um, we look forward to your updates on what that means for our residents. We'll, we'll look for your update next week. Tina, I'm sorry, go ahead. You have a question?
Yeah, just, uh, Linda, the, the mention that you're coming back next week.
Yes.
To present your budget and your earlier comment about the effects of isolation. Um, I'm, I'm hoping to hear out of your, your budget presentation, if you feel that there are any asks or, or services that need to be in place to assess what has now been eleven months of, of isolation. months of, of isolation and all that comes with it, because at some point this vaccine will allow all of us, seniors in particular, to re-enter the community and that will mean re-entering the senior center and participating together. And I think that's when your group will really come to understand the full impact of this isolation on, on the people that you serve, the residents you serve. And so I'm, I'm hoping to hear from your budget presentation if you've thought about how you will assess that, how you, have you identified the types of needs you think you're going to see when kind of the curtains pull back and you really get a look into what the impact of these eleven months of isolation have been. And I also cannot help but wonder if this tail end is going to be yet another traumatic kind of experience of this pandemic on this population, because it all sounds very intimidating, filled with fear and stress and so on. So anyway, I'm looking forward to hearing your budget presentation and understanding if you feel like there are changes that need to come in FY22 to particularly address how you'll assess the impacts, the effects of the isolation. I think that's really important.
Okay.
So thank you very much, Linda, for joining us. We look forward to hearing from you next week financially and programmatically. Our best to you and your staff during a very busy time, and thank you for all your help trying to provide this critical service to our seniors. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to the next part of our agenda, which is public comment. Mr. Sparrell.
One second.
Shouldn't we go to the CARES Act programmatic first?
Pardon, sorry about that. Mike, do we have a care? Sorry about that, Ben, thank you for noting that. Do we have a CARES Act programmatic update this evening?
Yes, very quickly. First of all, we had a very productive working group meeting last week, which you alluded to earlier, the meeting which took place on Thursday morning, which included folks from the schools as well as from the municipal side. We are actively making sure that we have accounted for all of the different expenses which have been incurred to date and know whether those are going against the municipal CARES funds that were received or against the school-specific CARES funds that were received. And so I expect that next week I will have a much more detailed report for you in terms of what our, our current balance is on the municipal side. But I do have one request for you this evening. This is for nine hundred and forty-eight dollars and ten cents, which would be for a total of four air purifiers for the Holliston Police Department. This would come under the CARES category of cleaning and disinfecting of public buildings. And this is the same type of unit that was purchased for municipal offices at the town hall back in December, when we were thinking that we were going to have to spend the money by December thirtieth. Since then, we've had another department, the police department, ask if we could acquire some air purifiers for their, their building. And so what we want to do for uniformity purposes is have the same unit so that when we need to replace filters, we only need to stock one and not three different styles. So request is for nine forty-eight, ten.
Mr. Sparrell, any questions on this matter?
No questions.
Tina?
No questions, thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the request of nine hundred and forty-eight dollars and what was the change, twelve cents, Mike?
Ten cents.
Motion to approve the request for four air purifiers for the Holliston PD.
So moved.
Ben Sparrell.
You know, I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Ben Sparrell, aye.
John Cronin, aye. But carries, thank you, Mike. Anything else on the programmatic side, Mike?
Nope, that does it. Thank you very much.
Just before I let you get away, Travis, did you want to say something?
I was going to say, I think next week, you know, based on the conversation that we had with the schools last week, you know, I think a, a more, a, a longer programmatic update from the chief will be coming, based on that conversation, which again was, was very fruitful, very helpful to give the rest of the board sort of all that information in a, in a easy to read format to get us, you know, a roadmap for the rest of the fiscal year. So that, that would be for next week, but we are almost at nine o'clock, so I think next week is a good time to do that.
Sounds good. Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Now we move on to the rest. Mr. Sparrell, instead of asking for your public comment, may I ask you for the warrants, please?
We don't have the warrants because we, town hall is closed, so we're going to be, we'll probably have them next week.
I would, I would forewarn you that you'll probably be getting a message from me tomorrow that I may need signatures later in the day from at least two members of the select board. And depending on where you are, I may be coming to you.
I, I can snowshoe over that, it's not a problem.
I'm around, I'll be, I'll be able to come over in the afternoon.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, Ben, any public comment?
Yeah, two things. Just wanted to mention that to, to everybody that trash is delayed by one day because of the storm, so tomorrow there won't be trash pickup. And so if you had Tuesday pickup, you have Wednesday, et cetera. So just wanted to remind people about that. And the second comment I have is the Blair Square Committee is having a Zoom public forum on Wednesday evening at seven PM. There's details on the Zoom on the town's website. I encourage anyone who has any comments, any wants to hear what's going on or wants to provide feedback about any aspect of Blair Square, either it's how it's presently being used or the proposals for future use, please, we want to hear as much feedback as possible. So seven PM Wednesday evening via Zoom.
Hey, Ben, just a quick comment on that. I did get Ingo's invitation to those events and it included a hyperlink to the space where the, the meetings would occur, as well as potential link to what the rendering of the Blair Square footprint would look like.
Yep.
Rendering wasn't available. So I'm not sure if Ingo had caught up with that between, I think it was Friday when I looked at it now, but just an FYI, it'd be nice to see what touch they are planning to work on. So if you want to pass that along.
I, yeah, I did check the website just before, a little while ago, and I didn't see it was up yet. I'll just follow up with her in the morning just to see if she has any updates or can provide any information prior to the meeting.
Thanks, Ben. Tina?
Just really quickly, I wanted to congratulate our very own Assistant Principal Jessica Beatty of the Adams Middle School. She was nominated and was awarded the 2021 Paul J. Hunter Assistant Principal of the Year Award for the State of Massachusetts. So congratulations to Assistant Principal Jessica Beatty. By all accounts, very well deserved and very proud for her. That's it, thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks, Tina. I just wanted to make one brief announcement and thank the superintendent, the school committee chair, as well as the business manager for coming down last week. Travis alluded to, it was a very productive conversation, yet again, between the town and the schools relative to the CARES Act awards that the town has received. The business manager, Chief Cassidy, went through in fine detail where the town sits with respect to the finances associated with each award. I think the town came away in a favorable position from that meeting. And subsequently, I look forward to seeing, as Travis alluded, an updated presentation of available funds from the CARES Act for use going forward for the remainder of 2021. Again, just a great meeting. Budget Subcommittee Chairwoman Anne Louise Hinsed also joined us. Pleasure to work with, good group, and the town is in great shape with regards to funding for CARES Act matters. I also just wanted to remind folks, there's a storm brewing outside. And for this storm and for any other storm, Mr. Sparrell always brings up the need to park off the street and obey the bylaws, but I also wanted to pass along that people who have structures on or near the public roadway, i.e. basketball nets and so forth, should remove those from use from near the roadways, especially during the winter season, so as not to impact plows and the heavy equipment operating at night, most of the time in the middle of a snowstorm. So residents could adhere to that, we would appreciate it. All right, so moving on, we will now go to Mr. Hearn for updates from the town administrator.
Sure, so let me just piggyback on what, what you had said there. Just reiterate, we're, we're in the middle of a storm at the moment. Obviously, the parking ban goes into effect, it has been in effect since November first, goes through March thirty-first, so no, no on-street parking between 1:00 AM and 5:00 AM. This is designed to keep streets open, safe and essential traffic moving. Residents are discouraged from parking on the street during any snowstorm and are encouraged to plan ahead for alternate off-street parking. You know, we, we will, I'll probably be bringing to the board in the future after a discussion with, with council, potential if, if we can sort of extend that further during major events like the one we're in right now. But at the very least right now, for everybody to understand that the parking ban is in effect and that's helping us, it's helping DPW serve the community. As Mr. Cronin mentioned, the basketball hoops, I just, just for sort of clarity on this, this is something that used to be part of our, our normal announcement. I think a lot of people think that because they have it on their, you know, on the curb or off, off the street itself, that there's no issues, but when the net overhangs the, the, the street, it can cause issues, get mangled, get, get caught on our equipment and get mangled. So you, you know, if you can consider that, if you have one that's on wheels, to, to make sure you drive it back from the street as much as possible, so it doesn't overhang at all, that is appreciated. A couple roadways, I just like to point out as well, you know, because of, of the, the winter parking and, and helping operations, it, it helps the DPW serve the community, you know, we will be looking to potentially ticket or tow or both anybody who's in violation of that parking ban. So please make sure that you are adhering to that and we will be, you know, patrolling a couple streets that we've seen having issues with that. Just a few other things I wanted to mention to, to sort of piggyback on Ben Sparrell's comments on Blair Square, a few issues that this board has been, been keeping an eye on. Trash receptacle was added to Blair Square. It is near the dog waste containers. Somebody moved it at one point. We would like it near the dog waste containers and we'll be monitoring that. The group of high school students who came in front of you will also be adding signs to make it clear that what we would like is regular trash in the trash bin, dog waste in the dog waste bin, and that's why we placed it where we placed it. Additionally, Bobby Blair came to you with the idea for a farmer's market. I did track down some of the, the questions that the select board had, went back to him and the working group he has going, and I will try to put him back on an agenda for you shortly. I think he'll be going to see the EDC first and then he'll be back in front of you. This Thursday, we've added a select board meeting to sort of make sure that we're catching up with budgets while also doing all of the important things that the select board does, including interviewing police officers and, and all these other things that we've been, we've been keeping up with. So we've added a couple Thursday night meetings here and there, you know, with, with Chris Mayo's support, obviously. He's going to be having our meeting on Thursday night, but also the 555 Hopping Brook meeting on Thursday night is going to be a big one, while attended. We're trying to make sure that both of those meetings can be out on HCAT, but I will, we will make sure that those are posted, that everybody can, can pay attention. The 555 will at the very least be listening to information on the traffic study and peer review of the traffic study. Additionally, sound engineering study and plan design changes have been added to the website of 555. If you're unaware, you can go through our website and sign up to be made aware of any changes or any documents that are added to the website as it relates to the 555 Hopping Brook project that is in the planning board stages. One other thing of note that I'd like to mention is an HCAT show this Wednesday night, co-hosted by Mary Greendale and Paul LeBeau, Government 101, that's designed to give people the background information you need on town government. I think, you know, a major focus on how town meeting operates and the importance of it. And that is February third at 7:00 PM on HCAT. You can also Zoom in or watch Facebook Live. If you're going to ask questions, you need to Zoom. If you want to watch and listen, Facebook or TV will work for that. A facilities update for many of the projects that were approved in December, town meeting, the library and COA interior improvement projects, two components of each of those when it comes to painting, flooring, those types of things, actually received over a hundred quotes between the two of them. There's a lot of interest. This is a time where people want to be doing work indoors while it's snowing outside, so very hopeful that we'll, we'll get the best group to do those projects and that will refresh those two facilities. The invitation for bids for the town hall floors, we will be opening those bids this Wednesday. We will be physically opening those bids at this time. We are not intending to do a remote open. And the Dude Solutions software is up and running, and I will be looking to put James Keast on a future agenda for you so that he can give you a walkthrough now that that is live. I think he's working through a couple of the initial issues that, that come with that going live, but at the same point, I think it, you know, it's an important project for the town and one that, you know, I, I think putting James on your future agenda will be a good step there. Lastly, I, I think I had previously indicated to you that I, I was confident that we would be being awarded the Local Rapid Response Planning Grant from the state to look at our downtown area and help us respond in a rapid manner, as, as in the name, to help our local businesses downtown. We have officially received word that we did receive that. I say grant, in reality, they pay directly for technical assistance contractors to come in and work with us. The working group that has been established for that includes two members of HCAT, a member of the EDC, member of Holliston together, member of the select board, Ms. Tina Heine, a member of the finance committee, Sooner Sessian. So we will be moving ahead with that and we expect that the consultant will be on-site and working with our group as early as two weeks from now. And that is all I have for you.
That's great, Travis, thank you. Any questions in the town administrator, Ben?
Right now, thank you.
All set. Nope.
Just one question, Travis, I, you probably hate me for asking the question, but it's been a while since we asked about the town hall door project, when we can expect some doors at the town hall?
So February was the latest date that I was told, and it's now February, so I guess the clock is ticking on the shortest month of the year for it to be done. I don't know if James wants to hop in here, but I think February is, is the date, is the month that I expect it to be completed in.
Yeah, this is James. I did reach out to the awarded authority today, did not get a return call. I'm wondering, Travis, if there's any leverage we can pull. I'm not sure what the rules are in terms of pulling back an award. It's been almost a month and a half, almost two months, and we keep on getting excuses. So maybe we don't have to discuss it here at this forum, but I'd like to see if there's an opportunity to at least threaten to pull the award if we don't get time reaction.
We can discuss that. Appreciate that. All right, we'll move on in our agenda. We're business. Mr. Sparrell, I don't know if you have the meeting minutes, are we going to do that this evening?
I think so. I can make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for January eleventh, 2021, and January nineteenth, 2021.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Yep, this is Tina Heine, I second that.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
John Cronin, aye.
Ben Sparrell, aye.
But carries, thank you. Travis, an update on the traffic engineer selection?
Yes, so we have, we have put out here four requests for quotes. We did receive two quotes back by the deadline. Both of them are well-established firms. The quotes you have are, you know, from a price perspective, there, there's a clear favorite. I also find that, that the lowest quote, which is from a responsible firm, in my opinion, will get us what we're looking for when it comes to the list of communities. I think additionally, what it's going to allow us to do is, is go through this stage with our high priority streets when it comes to knowing that we, we would like to pursue a heavy commercial vehicle exclusion. On South Street, Woodland Street is on this list because more data may be necessary. So I mean, those are, those are the ones that I, I think as a select board, you have established that, that you are certainly interested in that. The other ones, you know, it is, it is going to be an issue of data coming back. So at this point, McMahon, who has worked in town before, but again, this is a, is a very specific service that we're looking for in this regard, is not necessarily tied to the other work that's been done in town through this group. I think the other thing that is important to note i- is that, you know, they, they've separated in their quote, a pretty cost-effective way to collect the data on each of these streets through the, the ATR, the Automatic Traffic Recorder, which Mass DOT accepts and recommends for use in, in heavy commercial vehicle exclusion applications, as a very reasonable cost to do these streets if we were to want to do additional streets afterwards. as a very reasonable cost to do these streets if we were to want to do additional streets afterwards. And also that in a, at a very reasonable lump sum cost, they will put together all the documentations, required mapping that, that Mass DOT requires, which I can tell you from putting in through an application on one street is very arduous. And, and I think based on their, their cost estimate here, we would certainly be interested in, in pursuing.
I'll open it up to any questions from my colleagues, starting with Mr. Sparrow.
Just one question. So I noticed that the particular bid and question here. When, are we going to be collecting speed data or no for, for this, for these exercises?
So the answer from, so we actually, I, I received feedback from more than just these two. These are the two quotes you received. I, I received feedback from probably four or five. The answer is essentially when you're doing ATR, you're collecting speed data as well. So it, it really is going to be, come down to, yes, the data will be collected, I think, again, in, in what McMahon has sort of indicated they would give us as their, their product, I'll call it, or deliverable. You know, I think we could engage with them on how we would, what format we would like to see that in, but the data would be collected through the ATR process.
Okay. All right. That's, that's the only question I have. Thank you.
Tina?
My only question would be, and Travis, I'd asked this a while ago, coming out of a traffic advisory committee meeting. All Traffic Solutions does not have the ability to collect this data to satisfy DOT's requirements. I just want to confirm that.
So what they're saying is that they can. I think what we're hearing and what I was told by Mass DOT is essentially, you know, when we're pursuing this in the application, what we need is it being stamped by an engineer, right? That was the reason for this. So I think what we can do with the equipment that TAC requested and was approved and has been procured at the December town meeting, we can now internally begin to, first of all, some of these things, right? If we were to get a heavy commercial vehicle exclusion, we now have the capability of sort of tracking internally what that would do in the area, right? We can sort of look at, look at the implications of those and collect our own data for that, so that we don't have to rely on outside sources. Additionally, we could, if we, if we had a street that we thought was in question of whether or not it would hit 5%, which is the, the threshold to get to for a heavy commercial vehicles, we could now do that, have confidence that we would hit that number, then engage somebody to get an engineer stamp on it. We could also try in the future to, to use it with Mass DOT and, and go down that road. But the, the answer I received originally when I asked the question was no, it would not work. Because of the engineer stamp.
Okay. And again, to follow up on Ben's question, we are not getting an 85th percentile out of this because I'm reading here, the McMahon quote says it does not include data summary analysis. Data summary or analysis. So we would get the data without any 85th percentile calculated, calculated to make a recommendation for a speed limit. Proposed speed limit. That's not the work that's going to be done here. It'll be the data alone.
Yeah, that was not in the RFQ.
Yeah, okay.
So Travis, I only have a couple of questions, pretty straightforward. Two bids. The financial difference between one and the other is substantial. Is it safe to say that the preferred bid wins because of the financial angle?
It does. I, I mean, again, it, it needs to be a responsible bidder. And so I, I think that's the question. I think in both of these cases, they are. I think the, the product that's been that, that answers the RFQ from McMahon, I actually personally like better as well. And so, yeah, I, I, I think the cost, you know, I would be willing to look beyond the cost if there were clearly one of them was, was the responsible bidder and one was not. I don't think that's the case.
If we approve of a bidder tonight, your expectation for services would be that they would engage relatively quickly. Can you bring us back to that point in time last fall when we were talking about the timeline for this work and how it can add to, towards the town's interest in more exclusions? Bring me to the timeline, if you could. What's the expected term of this service?
So the, the one question that, that leads to timeline, and this is one that I, I've been engaged with Mass DOT on quite a bit because of the application that we have in for heavy commercial vehicle exclusion on Woodland Street. First of all, that application went in mid-November, and we're still pending. I have been, you know, sort of asked to, to provide more information to, to get it to the finish line, which I will do. But that's, that's an example of the timeline that we're looking at when we're pursuing these in general. One component of that is it is very specific data that they're looking for. The counts that we provided on Woodland were for a 12-hour count. We need a 24-hour count. We'll do that through this process. It's not going to change anything substantially in my mind. I think we'll, that application will go through. But at the same point, these do not turn over very quickly. What I would like to do is get the data as soon as possible, provided that, you know, the, the vendor that we select feels like a count right now during COVID is going to be accepted by Mass DOT. Again, I've, I'm, that's a conversation that I've already had with Mass DOT. We can't just not do business and not pursue these things that we know are issues in our town. So I, I don't think that that's going to hold us up. But at the same point, if we go out and get the counts as soon as possible, get them back in, the application process is still not going to be very quick. My application on, you know, the application we had on Woodland is still pending, right? That's, that's how long these processes take.
All right. With that, I will, at this point, entertain a motion from any member of the select board who wishes to advance a vote on these two bids.
Can't read the room here by Zoom.
I, I was going to say, I'll make the motion to, do you want me to make the motion to accept the bid? Okay, I will make the motion to accept the bid for the traffic engineer selection and award the bid to McMahon Transportation Engineers.
Okay, I'll second the motion.
Okay, thank you, Ben. I appreciate that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. That Ben Sparrow, aye.
Aye, John Cronin. Okay, that carries. You good on that? Next on the agenda, do we have any information on the fire donation, Ben? I know you're remote. I'm not sure if you have.
Oh, yes. Yes, we have that. So I will make a motion to accept fire gift to the fire department in the amount of $400 from a Washington Street resident. This gift is unrestricted and will be received to the fire department gift account.
Second that motion?
Thank you, Tina. All those in favor say aye.
Ben Sparrow, aye.
Aye.
And John Cronin, aye. But carries. Thank you, Ben. Other business, Ben?
The only thing I just wanted to mention, piggybacking on Blair Square Forum on Wednesday. We requested to have Mr. Connolly, the Chair of that, the Blair Square Committee, speak to us next Monday to update us on next steps and where we're going to go. And the goal is to try to get something on the upcoming warrant for with regards to Blair Square, but it would come through us. So we'll have an update from, from Kevin next week to talk about it. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Tina.
Uh, nothing except schools close tomorrow.
Beat me to the punch. I just saw that.
Well, you don't have a 14-year-old dancing around, you know, that I'm constantly on mute because we just got the text, so.
Yep.
Paulson tomorrow.
All right. Mr. Hearn, any comments?
I would just point out that town hall will open at noon tomorrow to allow for the roads to clear and the parking lot to be cleared for us. But it is the long day at town hall, so it'll be open until seven. And if anybody was concerned about their tax bill due today, that will not be an issue if it is turned in tomorrow. And anybody who dropped it in the mailbox today, it is, it is on time. So town hall open tomorrow at noon.
Thank you, Mr. Hearn. We are on for, you said, Thursday evening at seven to do a couple of budgets, correct?
Yes.
All right, great. All right, well, at this point, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn until, we're going to meet again Thursday evening. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Ben Sparrow, I make that motion to adjourn.
And I will second that, Tina Hind.
All those in favor say aye. Ben?
Ben Sparrow, aye.
Aye.
John Cronin, aye. Thank you for joining us, Hollison. We'll see you Thursday evening at 7:00 PM. Enjoy the storm and drive carefully. Good night.
Thanks.